You know, and you'd see it loft in the upper deck and then come down to the second and eighth, you know, but he put everything in front of him, you know, to where that's kind of fits with him to take the ball step up in the pocket.
Poor, the guy that really got so good. The kid they out of Kentucky that they got in the first draft when they came back, um, I don't know if it's his name, they just beat the, you know, whatever.
I got two of his bobbleheads.
Yeah. Do you, are you watching any of the Cavaliers games?
No, they took them away from me.
Did they? Your cable doesn't?
They additionally took it away.
Oh. I was gonna say they have Brad Doherty doing some of the color, which is makes it interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder who they're gonna get to replace Doug Deacon now, you know?
I'll tell you what, Joe Thomas would do a good job, but I don't think they'll be able to get him.
The only other one that I thought make it colorful is that, uh...
Tom, you're empty handed. What is that? You're empty handed. Well, the lady...
He does that show on Channel forty-three and he used to come on eleven hundred all the time, the Kent State Running Man that we had.
Chris, Josh Chris.
I think he'd be a good one.
I don't know, he makes too much money for Supertini.
Well, he has his own show on Channel forty-three.
Oh, does he?
Yeah, he and his wife, yeah.
I didn't know that.
But he was, I always liked listening to him on that Monday show when he would be on the Trevor Sano Show, cause he adds a different light to what we see here.
He's knowledgeable.
Yeah.
All right.
You gonna put yours on?
John?
Uh, do you wanna do that? If you...
Do you lose her?
I don't know. Jan?
Hello?
Hi, I'm here.
Uh, we'll just do this on...
Okay, I think I also could do it on my Mac, um, which is what I'm on right now, which is why it took me a second to get to you. So, I, I would suggest that we still continue with both, um, just in case.
Sounds good. Okay, are we ready to go then?
Yes, we're good on my end.
Okay, there you go. That's, uh, you got Judy?
I'll just start and then we'll just go from there.
All right, uh, calling this public hearing to order at, uh, seven eleven on Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. This meeting is being taken for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. Any board member who has a monetary interest or has a conflict, including ex parte communication, should disclose now. And I will now ask the secretary to call the vote.
Collabro?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Celestine?
Here.
Bud?
Here.
Shaffer?
Yeah.
Uh, Shaffer is going to be a voting member, moving up from an alternate. Uh, the, um, if you would read the legal notice at this point. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals will hold two public hearings on Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. The first hearing to begin at seven P M. and the second to follow consecutively at the Administration Building located at fourteen-ten Ridge Road, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Routes three and three oh three. Subject of the first hearing is as follows. An application for variance AP zero-two-six-zero was submitted by applicants Catherine and Michael Baker, property owners of nineteen sixty-four Plymouth Oval, Hinkley, Ohio, permanent parcel number zero-one-six-zero-three-A zero-nine-zero-one-three, requesting to construct an attached garage at said property in a location that does not meet the side yard setback of fifteen feet. Inspection of this property will take place on Saturday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at ten A M. Zoning reference, Chapter six, District Regulations, subsection six R one dot four dot K dot two dot D of the Hinkley Township zoning regulations. Copies of these applications and other supporting material will be available for public viewing from the date of this notice to the date of hearing at the zoning department located in the Administration Building at fourteen-ten Ridge Road, Monday, ten A M. to six P M., Tuesday through Thursday, nine A M. to two P M. and Friday, nine A M. afternoon. Information may also be found on the Hinkley website at www.hinkleytpw.org under News and Events titled Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing. All interested parties are asked to attend this hearing or to send written comments to the Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals, P O Box three-four-four, Hinkley, Ohio, four-four-two-three-three. Log into www.hinkleytpw.org or Zoom option to observe listen only. Must be in person to speak or participate in meeting. Thank you. Uh, and has the notice been sent to the appropriate property owners?
Yes.
Okay. The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals acts within the authority of Section five-nineteen of the Ohio Revised Code and exercises its powers as provided under Chapter seven and thirteen of the Hinkley Township zoning regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to testify must do so from the podium, must identify themselves and give their residence address, and must be sworn in. Evidence and testimony must be pertinent to the hearing and it is the chairman's discretion to limit personal comments, personal attacks, opinions, and/or repetitious statements or testimony or evidence previously given. Disruptive persons will lose the right to remain at this hearing and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Uh, the first hearing is upon the application of Catherine and Michael Baker, property owners of the property located at nineteen sixty-four Plymouth Oval, Hinkley, Ohio, for a variance from the enforcement of certain Hinkley Township zoning resolution sections to property owned by the applicant. The applicant has submitted a packet that, uh, the board has, uh, in front of them, which includes the original variance application, a letter from the property owners, uh, renderings of drawings of the detached garage to be built, and site map. Uh, and all are related to the variance request. Notice of application was properly given in local newspapers and the application has been available for public view, uh, review and comment. I will now ask the secretary, uh, to poll the board, or I'm sorry, prior to that, if we have received any phone calls or emails, anything regarding, any correspondence regarding this application.
No correspondence, no phone calls, emails, and no one visited the office.
Okay. I note for the record that non-written communication made by known or unknown persons not under oath at a properly noticed hearing is not accepted by the Board of, uh, of Appeals as testimony. Each member of the Board of Appeals has been provided a copy of this application and a copy of each of the other documents submitted in support of this application. At this point, if we would poll the board, uh, if they have the packet and also if they conducted a site visit. Collabro? Yes, and yes on the site visit on January twenty-sixth.
Who?
Yes and yes and site visit twenty-second, Saturday.
Celestine?
Yes and yes, site visit on the twenty-second.
Bud?
Yes and yes, visit on the twenty-second.
Shaffer?
Yes to both and on the twenty-second.
All right, uh, written communications from persons not present this evening may include communications that are not made by affidavit. Because these communications are made by persons not under oath, they are not accepted by this board. I also note that written communication may include some writing by affidavit by persons that are not present this evening and therefore cannot be subjected to cross-examination. These affidavits, therefore, will not be given much weight, if any, in the decision of the board on this matter. This board does have the power to grant a, uh, the applicant's request for a variance, and those people that wish to speak must do so from the podium and must state their name and address before addressing the board. All testimony must be given from the podium and on behalf of the virtual audience, we ask to save any personal conversations for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. And at this point, I, I would ask the applicant to step up and give us some... And if I could swear both of you in, please state your name.
I am Catherine Baker.
Catherine Baker, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer on the count.
I do.
And...
Michael Baker.
Michael Baker, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you just swear.
I do.
Okay, as you say, answer on the count. Uh, can you state your address, please?
One-nine-six-four Plymouth Oval.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, we have your application. Do you wanna just give us a little summary of what you would, what you are applying for, or any changes to the application, anything additional?
The only thing additional is, um, we have not had our property line survey, surveyed, so we don't know exactly where the property line is. Um, the driveway where it stands appears to be ten, approximately ten feet from the property line, but where we're placing the garage, we may have as much as twelve. We really don't know for certain. Um, we have discussed potentially moving that, because our lot is pie-shaped and we are very close to that line, um, we have, uh, discussed possibly moving the garage placement back six feet, which will give us even more space from the property line. That is something we've recently discussed since the site visit. Um, again, the difficulty with the lot is where we would like to place the garage is at the end of the current driveway pad. Um, we have a, a, a great bit of, uh, slope there behind that spot, so moving back creates a difficulty in building, although, like I said, we'd be willing to do the six feet. Um, so, the further back we go, we risk going into the woods, which we wanted to avoid because we didn't want trees to fall on the garage, and also because of the slope, it makes it difficult to build there. Um, but the placement, we feel, is the most logical place for the garage, um, and we would like to, uh, attach it with a breezeway to the current existing house.
Okay. So, are you planning to get a survey or are you just...
We, the, we have not.
Our assumption was, we were building the garage at the end of the curb pad, which was put there.
Which is what you submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so you would, you would like to stay with that, with what you submitted?
Um, or near, yes. I guess so, yes, or...
Yes.
Yeah.
The only thought was, is, is, we thought about if it would be easier, we would just move it straight back, but it still plans to be at the end of our pad.
Okay, cause it, it's interesting that you brought that up as the first, uh, uh, point because, um, Kate, do you wanna...
Yeah, I got a question, um, the, um...
Actually, if you wanna take one.
You're gonna be redoing the, you're gonna be redoing the driveway, right?
Yes, we are.
And is the driveway going to be in the same location as it is now?
Yes, it is.
And based on that, based on your measurements, you talked about a six-foot breezeway, twenty-two-foot garage, which is the twenty-eight feet, which, uh, is to the edge of the driveway, which I believe when we, um, measured out there was about what we measured, twenty-eight feet, wasn't it? Because I think the thirty-foot tape went two feet into the snow.
Yes.
Okay, um, I did a little research, I wanna make sure, cause you said you, you did not have it, uh, surveyed, and I wanted to make sure that we, you weren't, uh, it wasn't more than what you wanted. So I went on the tax, Medina tax maps.
Mm-hmm.
And I did a little measuring and, um, using their, their ruler on the tax map, I went to the, uh, edge of the roofline to the edge of the concrete driveway you have right now, and that comes out to twenty-eight feet.
Okay.
So, and again, this is not gonna be perfect.
Sure.
But then if you look at the proportion to where they're showing the property line, that shows another nineteen feet.
Uh-huh.
So in reality, if this is true, you really don't need the variance. But it makes the five, the five-foot variance now more, uh, of, um...
Less of a substantial.
More, yeah, less substantial because you're not gonna get it surveyed. But I just wanted to let you know, if you did get it surveyed, you might have been able to put a, a bigger garage in at the time.
Oh, well, we don't need a bigger garage.
We don't need a bigger garage.
But I'm just saying, you know, because when I looked at what you, what you put here, even, and here it shows that, um, the proportions show that that would be more than the ten feet that you're, uh, anticipating that the, um, property line is. So I think your property line may be further over than you think.
Okay.
Fair enough.
That would be good.
Right, and, and you're in, you're in the middle of this process now, so for you to say, "We don't need the variance," then you really need to get a survey in order to... So, so I mean, it would be...
Let's go ahead and proceed just as soon.
We just proceed as it is and, and yes, we've come this far. And, and like I said, our, our assumption was, when we initially, uh, met with the company to build the garage, our assumption was, is that the driveway was at fifteen feet or whatever it was. We didn't realize that there's a difference between a driveway and a structure, so, I guess.
And again, you know, we're going by the tax maps, which, I mean, even if it's a few feet o-over, I think you've got more property than you think you have.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, that's fair.
Again, based on the Medina tax maps only.
Right, and this might be an approximate, this ruler, too. Make sure there's, you know...
Sure. Yeah, but the funny part of it is, when I used the ruler, when I used from the, it came out to be twenty-eight feet, um, and we measured twenty-eight feet from the thing for it.
I see what you're saying.
Difference, because this comes from the edge of the roofline versus the wall of the building.
Uh, okay.
And I couldn't remember what your overhang was, if it's two feet.
No, it's not eighteen inches.
I thought they were, they're longer than...
Six inches now, right?
I didn't think it was that large.
Well, they're...
It's not, it, it's, it's...
Go ahead, sorry.
It's eleven inches, so...
Okay, so this might be a foot off, so I'd say, uh, you probably have more property than you think you have.
Okay.
But I think we need to go with what you're asking for. This makes us, a little easier on us when we're looking at the, uh, variance.
Yep, cause like you said, it can be slightly skewed. I mean, we, we did bring our original tax map from nineteen eighty and, and one of the gentlemen, I believe, discussed how they used to do a double-layered thing and it was slightly off, but, um, yeah, I, I'm fine with proceeding as it is.
Okay. And just, just to get it on the record, what is the reason that you're building this garage?
Uh, well, it's partly because we could not, we couldn't, we couldn't decide where to put a shed, let's put it...
We're heavily wooded, we've lost a lot of trees, we didn't wanna put anything in the woods.
And we just thought this would be, we've, we've got three cars in the driveway, we thought we would use one bay as a shed and then the other three cars could fit in the garage and that's really...
Okay, so it's for personal storage use?
Yeah, yeah, partly, yes, yeah.
So you're not gonna be running a business on...
No.
No, no, nope.
Okay. Um, I have another question, yes?
Tom?
Did you ever look at the...
You know, Bill, I'm sorry, I just, I, I forgot it, but, uh, you know, we talked about, we have some of the old maps in there, and I didn't do it. David asked me that, but he came in today and I realized I hadn't done it.
Well, they're, they're fairly accurate before you go out.
Yeah.
Probably behooves you to actually take measurements off of that.
Yeah.
Find out where you're at.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions? Anyone in the audience? No. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Can I keep this?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, so, at this point, um, maybe we'll do the Duncan factors? Does everybody have a copy of them? I can just read them?
Yeah.
All right, you ready?
Ready.
Okay, uh, number one, will the property yield a reasonable return or can there be a beneficial use of the property without the variance?
Shaffer?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
Celestine?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Yes. Uh, is, uh, number two, is the variance substantial?
Bud?
No.
Celestine?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
All right, will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered or will adjoining properties, uh, suffer a substantial detriment if the variance is granted?
Celestine?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Bud?
No.
All right, will the variance adversely affect the delivery of governmental services?
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Bud?
No.
All right, will the variance adversely affect the delivery of governmental services?
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Bud?
No.
Celestine?
No.
Uh, did the property owner purchase the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions?
Collabro?
I don't know.
Shaffer?
Well, they never stated either way. Um, they're shaking their heads, uh, no.
No.
So I would say no.
Bud?
No.
Celestine?
No.
Who?
No.
Can the problem be solved by some manner other than granting of a variance?
Shaffer?
I would say yes.
Bud?
No.
Celestine?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Probably yes. Uh, does the variance preserve the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement and will substantial justice be done by granting the variance?
Bud?
Yes.
Celestine?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
All right, uh, any person adversely affected by a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals may appeal to the Court of Common Pleas in Medina County and the grounds that such decision was unreasonable or unlawful. Uh, and at this point, I would like to ask for a motion.
All right, I make a motion for a variance AP zero-two-six-zero submitted by the applicants Catherine and Michael Bender, property owners of nineteen sixty-four Plymouth Oval, Hinkley, Ohio, four-four-two-three-three. Permanent parcel number zero-one-six-zero-three-A zero-nine-zero-one-three, requesting to construct an attached garage at the said property in a location that does not meet the side yard setback of fifteen feet. Request a five-foot variance from the fifteen feet. Zoning reference, Chapter six, District Regulations, subsection six R one dot four dot K dot two dot D.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
And that is, uh, Dave?
The name on that, uh, motion is Baker, not Bender. I think you should...
Oh, I got it written, Baker, but I, I don't know. Uh, yeah, submitted for the applicants Catherine and Michael Baker, property owners of nineteen sixty-four Plymouth Oval, Hinkley, Ohio, four-four-two-three-three.
Okay.
Still second.
Second. All right, uh, before we take a vote, just wanna explain that a yes simple majority, uh, simple majority with a quorum present, uh, is in favor of the applicant, but no simple majority or a tie is a denial of the applicant's request. So at this point, we can take a vote?
Collabro?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Celestine?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
All right, so your request has been granted, uh, and you have one year, you're welcome, one year from the date of this hearing to begin construction or to act on the approved request. And anyone adversely affected by this decision has thirty days from the date in which the minutes of this hearing are approved to file suit or an appeal. Meeting minutes are typically approved at the next regular meeting. Upon approval of this hearing's minutes, such minutes will be posted and available at the township web, website. And if we can just take a quick recess, we'll get that form signed and you can have a copy. Uh, yeah, I won't.
I don't either. [LAUGHS] [INAUDIBLE] 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 Bill, are you recording?
I'm recording.
Yeah, it's on here too. So, it's good, no, it's good, you can do...
Backup.
Yeah. Multiple.
Thank you.
[INAUDIBLE]
All right.
Our point of view, yes.
Okay, uh, we resume, do I have a motion to adjourn the first public hearing, uh, this evening at, uh, what are we at? What happened?
Seven thirty-three.
At seven thirty-three P M.
So moved.
Second.
A second. Dave? Uh, so we are adjourned at seven thirty-three P M. for the first hearing. All right, just take a quick recess to start on the second. Thank you.
Yes, thank you again.
Good luck.
Good luck with everything.
Yeah. Now you can get your car inside. Okay. Everybody? Everybody ready?
Yep.
All right. All right. Let me start it. Okay. All right, Rebecca, I'm calling the second public hearing of this evening to order at 7, what time is it?
35.
Thank you. 7:35 PM on Wednesday, January 26, 2022. We are still being taped for transition purposes only. And again, any board member who has a monetary interest or has a conflict of interest, a conflict including expert communication should disclose now. I will go ahead and call the vote again.
Collabro?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Lesnick?
Here.
Bud?
Here.
Shaffer?
Yeah.
And also in the audience, Inspector Lesnick.
All right, and has the notice been sent to the appropriate property owners?
Yes.
All right. Again, the Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals acts within the authority of Section 519 of the Ohio Revised Code and exercises its powers as provided under Chapter 7 and 13 of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to testify must do so from the podium, must identify themselves and give their residence address, and must be sworn in. Evidence and testimony must be pertinent to the hearing. It is the chairman's discretion to limit personal comments, personal attacks, opinions, and repetitious statements or testimony or evidence previously given. And disruptive persons will lose the right to remain at this hearing, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. This is a hearing upon the application of Chris Bender on behalf of Hinkley Land Holdings LLC, property owner of Block A in the Reserve at Pine Valley, located at 2707 Hidden Pine Lane, Hinkley, Ohio, for a variance from the enforcement of certain Hinkley Township zoning resolution sections to property owned by the applicant. The applicant has submitted the packet that the board has in front of them, which includes the original application for variance, rendering of the sign, and site maps, all that are related to the variance request. Notice of application was properly given in local newspapers, and the application has been available for public review and comment. I will now ask the secretary if we have received any phone calls, correspondence that relate to this application.
No correspondence, no phone calls or emails, and nobody visited the office.
All right. I note for the record that non-written communication made by known or unknown persons not under oath at a properly noticed hearing is not accepted by this board as testimony. Each member of the board has been provided a copy of this application, a copy of each of the other documents submitted and supported this application. At this point, I would ask the secretary to poll the board if the application has been received and also if a site visit was conducted.
Collabro?
Yes, and yes, and a site visit to 26th, January 26th.
Who?
Yes, and yes, site visit 22nd.
Lesnick?
Yes, and yes, visit on the 22nd.
Bud?
Yes, and yes, visit on the 22nd.
Shaffer?
Yes, to both and on the 22nd.
Please. Judy, can you read the legal notice at this point?
Yes, the legal notice for the second hearing. An application for variance AP 0261 was submitted by applicant Chris Bender, agent on behalf of Hinkley Land Holdings LLC, property owner of Block A in the Reserve at Pine Valley, 2707 Hidden Pine Lane, Hinkley, Ohio, permanent parcel number 01703A16030, requesting to install a subdivision entryway monument sign at said property in a location that does not meet the side yard setback of 25 feet. Inspection of this property will take place on Saturday, January 22, 2022 at approximately 10:30 AM. Zoning reference Chapter 10 Sign Regulations, Section 10 dot 3 dot E dot 2 dot E dot 2 of the Hinkley Township zoning regulations.
Thank you. Written communications from persons not present this evening may include communications that are not made by affidavit. Because these communications are made by persons not under oath, they are not accepted by this board. I also note that written communication may include some writing by affidavit by persons that are not present this evening and therefore cannot be subjected to cross-examination. These affidavits will not be given much weight, if any, in the decision of the board on this matter. This board does have the power to grant an applicant's request for a variance, and again, anyone that wishes to speak must do so from the podium. And again, we ask the audience to save personal conversations for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. And at this point, the applicant is ready to go at the podium. And if we can swear you in, please state your name.
My name is Chris Bender. The address is 22700 Royalton Road, Strongsville 44149.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer unto God.
I do.
Thank you. So if you can just give us a summary of what you want to do and any changes to the application you submitted.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I represent Hinkley Land Holdings. We are the developer of the subdivision known as the Preserve at Pine Valley. It's a 30 lot subdivision, slightly some larger lots. Improvements are in the first phase. We had anticipated putting what we call an entrance monument on the north side of our new street. And lo and behold, we discovered when we were ready to apply for the permits, we were informed by Mr. Wilson that we had a little bit of an issue because we didn't have the proper setbacks. So we went back to the drawing board and we discovered that our area to put this sign, or this monument, as we call it, was going to be a little constricted. We had to comply with both a setback in the right of way for our own new street, as well as the setback from West 130th Street, which we did also deed an additional piece of property to the county to widen the right of way at that point. So that forced us a little further from West 130th. So we're good as far as any county or township setback lines for roadways, rightaways, and the visibility is very good. The problem we have is it forced us to build this monument, or proposed to build this monument, I should say, closer to our northern neighbor, Mr. Rupert. We're proposing, in order to meet the, the right of way setbacks were five and a half feet from Mr. Rupert's property. The monument, I think you had some illustrations of it. It's basically a stone monument with some ground lighting and perhaps a coach light on the top. It has no advertising. It has no addresses. It has no numbers. It merely has the logo that identifies the location. I have discussed this with Mr. Rupert, who is our neighbor to the, to the north. His house is situated deep on his lot. He's about 150 foot off of the road, and his home is on the extreme north end. So he's quite a distance from where this location is. I might note too that he has a circular driveway, which is important. Okay. In discussing with Mr. Rupert, the problem I had, and I asked for his indulgence, if you will, he was very helpful, and he did tell me that over the period of time, he's had a lot of people that use his yard as a turnaround. And that's, I think, one of, that's, I think, if there's a hardship here, I think I want to prevent a hardship. He's got several young grandchildren that live with him. They play in the side yard out there. And over the period of time, he, West 130th is a very busy street. People do pull into his yard when they decided they've missed an address, or they're going in the wrong direction or something. He said he's had people use his turnaround to get out. Okay. Certainly, that's not fair to him. And our thought is if we create this monument, if you will, with some lighting identification, traffic going to our new subdivision, as well as delivery trucks and so on and so forth, we'll be able to identify Hidden Valley. I think all to be observed when you're there for the site visit, the only real identification is the standardized county sign, which sits up on about a 10-foot, 12-foot pole. So it's kind of hard to see. It's dark out there at night. And what we want to do is prevent people from missing the street, if you will, delivery trucks and so on and so forth, so that they can find the entrance. Our plan is to landscape around it. We also will be landscaping the entire length of the common area along Mr. Rupert's property with, basically, it'll be kind of forested with evergreen trees. We'll be doing the same thing on the other side. I have not spoken directly to our neighbor on the south. She's not directly affected. But again, she suffers a little bit from the same issue. I've seen pickup trucks and things pull into her driveway and realize they've missed our street. So we, we think the hardship would be we want to avoid any, any problem in the future. And as I expressed before, Mr. Rupert has been very helpful. He said, I don't have a problem with it. You're far away from my house. Just make sure I have visibility pulling out on West 130th Street. So I think we all agree by looking, and the way we have it staked, we, we are quite a distance from West 130th, and I don't think will cause any visibility issues. I think the lights and identification will be helpful for everybody.
I don't think Mr. Rupert is here this evening.
No, I advised him.
Objection, if he's not here.
Yeah, I actually, you bring that up, I advised Mr. Rupert that this meeting, we'd be getting a letter. And he said, yeah, I've gotten them before and stuff. And I also advised him that there would be a site visit last Saturday. And he said, well, tell him what I said. So.
Been, been to his advantage and your advantage if you would have shown up.
Yes, I realize that, but I was appreciative of the fact that he didn't express an objection, I thought was to my advantage.
Do you know if the county or city plan on putting any streetlight, you know, the lights they usually put in front of subdivisions?
Not that I'm aware of. There was nothing proposed on our electrical plan. Right now, we're waiting for the Ohio Edison to complete our electric installation. They do have those two, two brand new poles that were laying in the snow out there on Saturday, but I checked our electrical layout, and they don't indicate. They're using that strictly to bring the power from the Brunswick side of the road across to the Hinkley side of the road, and then go underground.
Okay, because I was wondering, because I live near two subdivisions, very close, and neither one have signs or monuments.
Right.
Just the road signs.
Right.
They do have lights out there, and everybody seems to find them okay. But where I live, there's, it's heavy traffic twice a day. Now, I know the traffic's a little different on 130th.
Exactly.
So, but I just wondering if there was a light out there that would like.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's not indicated on the electrical design.
Sure.
On, I was going to give you this tonight, Bender. On March 30th, the trustees amended our code so that it says a streetlight will be installed and paid for by the developer. However, the monthly cost will be paid by the township. So you will have to put.
So. Well, I don't, I don't object to that, okay, because I believe in the safety, but is the fact that we're already approved it in, does that apply to us, or?
No.
Okay. But if, you know, if they'll, if they'll pay for the monthly maintenance, that's plus. So.
Maintenance of what?
Well, the, the light, the street light that Mr. Bender will put up, according to what the trustees did on March 20th, is the monthly cost will be paid by the township.
Okay, because I had a question as far as you, you described that it's going to be landscaped and all that. So who's going to be maintaining this? Is this part of the?
Yes, our homeowners, yes, our homeowners association has a responsibility to maintain all landscaping, as well as. All common areas, as well as our retention basins.
Okay.
And mailbox kiosk.
Okay.
If, because we're not.
So this is part of that.
This will be part. We have it. Yeah, we have that in our covenants and restrictions. That's probably the major point of our covenant restrictions, that and architectural approval. So we don't get somebody kind of going off on their own with their architecture.
Got it. Because I mean, I think what that's referring to is the power.
Yeah, this is.
But I'm referring to the actual maintenance of the landscape.
That would be our homeowners association. We maintain until.
It looks really pretty when the builder's there, but then once the builder's gone.
Yeah, we maintain it until, we maintain it until such a point as there's enough homeowners.
To take.
So it's not a burden on just a couple of homeowners, and then we turn it over. And we've been very successful. All, I, I think I've done probably 35 or 40 developments, and all the associations are well-funded. We, because we pay for the maintenance upfront, any money comes in, we bang for the future. So, you know, we always kind of give a little speech at the annual meeting that it goes there to maintain the value of their property. So if anybody thinks they shouldn't be paying, you know, we all got to chip in to make this happen.
Okay. And the only other thing I have, and I think you kind of stated it, because I kind of had a hard time finding what the hardship was. And I guess the hardship is that you've got here that, you know, you're concerned about the deliveries that will miss the street and utilize the residents' private drives. And, and I, I can see that point.
Right.
Personally, so. That's all I have.
Could you explain why you didn't move it closer to the street versus the putting it closer to the neighbor?
Moving it closer to our new street. Several things, as we all know, there's the pavement, and then there's a fairly substantial swale area for stormwater, parallel to the curve, to the pavement. And then beyond that is a water line, electric line, and a gas line. So that is all within the township right of way, the county right of way there. But we certainly want to be away from those. We don't want, we can't obstruct those or put anything on top of those, certainly in a swale or on top of the electric or gas lines.
So basically, swell in the utility corridor.
Eat up the right of way.
Eat up the right of way.
Yeah.
Basically, that's part of your hardship, too.
Thank you. That's, hadn't thought of it that way, but yes.
It's, it's the same kind of question. The request variance is the minimum variance. In other words, you're doing everything you can to minimize the variance.
Correct.
Requesting. So you're saying that five feet, five is the only location, or the location where you could first put this monument, taking into consideration the utility corridor and all the other?
In the township county right of way, correct.
Thank you.
Anyone, any other questions in the audience? Dr. Wilson?
Audience?
Yeah.
Richard Pearl, 1785 King Road, the opposite corner of the township from where this is. This is more.
I need to swear you in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer unto God.
Yes. This is more of a procedural question for the board, and I don't want to interfere, interfere with the grinding of the variance in any way. As a member of the steering committee for looking at redoing the comprehensive plan, we had our meeting, first meeting in this room last night, one of the residents brought up an issue about limiting light pollution, which I don't think has any effect on this. But I wonder if you would comment on that or ask about that? I wasn't prepared to speak, so I don't have a good question for you.
Yeah. I think, I think we, he started to cover.
I think the light is low on this monument, correct? And maybe you could just go from there.
Yeah, I may. We utilize low voltage ground wire at ground level, really just to accentuate the trees and bushes. The only thing we may have is one upright vertical light on the, on the, on the lettering that describes Pine, Pine Valley, okay? Yes, and I think we, we have a little, little tower there that would have.
This light that's on the tower.
That would be, yeah, that would not be a spotlight, but six foot off the ground. Coach light, I'm sorry, yes. And then as we move to the, to the east and go down the new road, our landscaping will continue, but our ground lighting would then decrease as we get back into the subdivision. Because our first home, our first subplot, is I believe like 600 feet down the road. So that's going to be a pretty dark, long stretch of road there. So we would like to have the ground lighting. I understand the issue about the light pollution and so on. That's becoming more of a, a topic on various projects that I work on. So I think we've addressed that with the type of lighting we're going to use.
So, go ahead.
Your point and Tom's point, when you put this street light in, get one of those yellow ones. In the state of Ohio on the freeways, that's all they put in now. They don't put in any white light anymore. So why don't you request?
Yeah, that is basically, if I, Mr. Wilson read that, as I understand it, that is strictly, Ohio Edison and CEI have a standard street light that they use. And the only thing you do, and I have this out in Avon Lake, for example, I just sign that whatever the installation cost is, $700, $800, whatever it is, I sign an agreement that I'll pay it, they put it in, and then the bill goes to, to the township. But we, as I guess a consumer, if you will, perhaps as the township, you don't get to pick, okay? I've had this.
You can't make a request.
I'll make, we'll make that request then.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay, the coach, as you called it, or lantern, which I call it.
Yes.
That's pretty much just a decorative, right? I mean, it's not really throwing out light.
That should be kind of just a, like that kind of thing, right?
And the lights going on the sign will probably be LEDs that are directed at the sign.
Just to uplight the sign, to draw attention so people can see. Yep, that's where we want to be.
Because I'm thinking, once you put that street light out there, that's going to sort of flood out a lot of that light anyhow.
It might, depending on where they locate it, it might, yes.
Okay. Did answer.
Does that answer your?
Your question.
Do this correctly. I have no further objection. It's really just, like I said, a procedural question that the board may want to address more in the future.
Okay.
Just wanted to make you aware.
Well, the, the only time we can, just like I did now, I made a request.
Correct.
But when we're doing a conditional, that's where we mandate it.
I understand the difference. Thank you. Okay.
All right, thank you both.
I understand that gentleman's concern at all of our developments. We, we want the residential atmosphere to be there subtle. We don't want to look like John Eagle.
Billboard.
Right. John Eagle, they can be somewhere else. We don't want them, they're right there.
All right. All right, very good.
One question I have, and looking through, some of it is 17.5, some is 19.5, you know, away from the, the different thing. I just want to make sure when I make the motion, I have the correct footage.
I believe that the, I believe it's a 25-foot requirement, Tom? And we have, we have five and a half at, it's.
So it's 19.5.
It'll be 19 and a half.
I made a mistake when I put that on the zoning provision. It should be 19.
Right.
19 and a half.
19.5, 19 and a half.
It's the only mistake you probably ever made.
Okay. Any other questions or anything else that we need to discuss?
No.
Okay, so we do need to go through the Duncan factors. So maybe we'll do that at this point. Is everybody ready for that?
Yep.
Are you ready?
All ready.
Okay. First one, will the property yield a reasonable return, or can there be a beneficial use of the property without the variance?
Shaffer?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
Lesnick?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Yes. Oh, sorry. Is the variance substantial?
Bud?
Yes.
Lesnick?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
All right. Will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered, or will adjoining properties suffer a substantial detriment if the variance is granted?
Lesnick?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No.
Shaffer?
No.
Bud?
No.
Will the variance adversely affect the delivery of governmental services?
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No. No.
Shaffer?
No.
Bud?
No.
Lesnick?
No.
Uh, did the property owner purchase the property knowledge of the zoning restrictions?
Collabro?
I don't know that this is applicable, but I, I don't know.
We don't know.
I don't think he knew either.
Shaffer?
Uh, no.
Bud?
No.
Lesnick?
No.
Who?
No.
Uh, can the problem be solved by some manner other than granting a variance?
Shaffer?
No.
Bud?
No.
Lesnick?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabro?
No. Uh, does the variance preserve the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement, and will substantial justice be done by granting the variance?
Bud?
Yes.
Lesnick?
Yes, for safety reasons.
Who?
Yes.
Collabro?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so any person adversely affected by a decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals may appeal to the Court of Common Pleas of Medina County, when the grounds say such decision was unreasonable or unlawful. Uh, and at this point, I would ask if we could have a motion?
I make a motion for a variance, A P zero-two-sixty-one, submitted by applicant Chris Bender, agent on behalf of Hinkley Land Holdings, L L C, property owner of Block A in the reserve at Pine Valley, twenty-seven-oh-seven Hidden Pine Lane, Hinkley, Ohio, four-four-two-three-three. Permanent parcel zero-one-seven-zero-three-A, one-six-zero-three-zero, requesting to install a subdivision entryway monument sign at the said property location that does not meet the side yard setback of twenty-five feet, a variance of nineteen-point-five feet from the twenty-five foot. Zoning reference, Chapter ten, sign regulations, Section ten, dot three, dot E, dot two, dot B, dot two, Hinkley zoning regulations. Second.
All right, that's Dave. All right, uh, before we take a vote, uh, I remind you that a yes simple majority with a quorum is in favor of the applicant, and no simple majority or a tie denies the applicant's request. And at this point, if you can take a vote?
Collabro?
Yes.
Yes.
Lesnick?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
All right, your variance has been granted, and, uh, you have one year from the date of this hearing to begin construction or to act upon your request. Anyone adversely affected by this decision has thirty days from the date in which the minutes of this hearing are approved to file suit or an appeal, and meeting minutes are typically approved at the next regular meeting. Upon approval of these hearing minutes, such minutes will be posted and available at the township website, and, uh, if we could just take a quick recess, we'll get you a form signed.
Well, thank you very much for your consideration, and I appreciate you coming out on Saturday. It was a little extreme, as well as this evening, so thank you for your service on this.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Judy, just so you know, um, all three trustees attended virtually today.
Thank you.
Good morning.